Good evening or afternoon and welcome to the September 15th, 2020 Lone Tree City Council Study Session. In support of the social distancing requirements and based on space limitations of our building, the city is limiting physical attendance at public meetings to only essential staff, applicants, and elected officials, and will continue to provide access to the public via electronic participation. All attendees are required to wear face coverings when entering and exiting the building and within six feet of one another. The city will also implement symptom monitoring measures for attendees such as temperature checks and completion of the city's facilities health screening survey before entering the meeting. The city council does not vote during study sessions since the presentations are for information only, therefore, there is no public comment during our study session. There will be several outside presenters joining us for our study session. Before we begin, I want to remind everyone joining us to please mute your microphones to prevent any background noise, then please unmute yourself before speaking. For anyone joining via phone, you can mute and unmute yourself by pressing star six on your phone. All the interesting things we've learned during COVID. All right, so to start off our formal agenda, we're going to have introduction of our new youth commission members, and they are here. We're thrilled to see them. So I'm going to turn it over to our city clerk, Jay Robb.
Thank you, Mayor. We were just looking for an opportunity for you all to meet the newly appointed youth commissioners. And at first, this study session agenda seemed kind of light, and so we invited them to come down, and then, as usually happens, things filled up. But Mayor, you have the list of recent youths that were appointed to the commission, and so I'll just let you call them up in the order that you choose.
Well, I'm going to go alphabetically because that's just the easiest, and I think that's how they're presented here. But is it Katja or Catalina? Catalina Colon. And if you want to just come up and say hello and let council look at you beyond the mask.
Hi, my name is Catalina Colon. I am a senior at Baller Christian High School.
Wonderful, and where in Lone Tree do you live?
I live in Heritage Hills.
Great, and what interested you in joining the youth commission?
Well, I love getting involved. I'm involved in a lot of different clubs at school, and I think it's really important to have a voice for the city. And I knew a few of the youth commissioners who were on there in the past, and they recommended it to me, and I took the first chance I could to apply.
Okay, well, I'm going to let, I think you've met a couple of the council members virtually, right? Or, yeah, so Jay, why don't you just quick hello, and then we'll just go around.
Will do, yes, great to see you in person, Catalina. It's always such a weird thing trying to navigate the whole Microsoft Teams thing, but you did a great job. I was really impressed by your energy, your enthusiasm, and everything you already have done, and we look forward to seeing what you'll do here on the youth commission.
Thank you so much. I look forward to it, too.
Great.
Okay, and council member Win Shaw?
It's always exciting to meet the new youth commission members, so we wish you well, and we are supporting you all the way.
Thank you so much.
And our mayor pro tem Kathy Brenner, who you did meet virtually.
I did, yes, so again, great to meet you in person now. We're just really looking forward to what you guys are going to contribute this year.
And then council member Mike Anderson.
Welcome, thank you for joining the youth commission. Look forward to your participation, and voice of youth is very important to us on council.
Thank you, Catalina. All right, so next, we're going to have Rex, and I should have practiced his name. Is it Bordelai?
Bordelai.
Bordelai, and Rex, we want to, they're going to clean off that area for you, just, we want to keep you guys as safe as we possibly can keep you.
Hi, I'm Rex Bordelai. I go to Highlands Ranch High School. I'm a junior. I live in Carriage Club. Yeah.
And so Rex, what made you interested in joining the Lone Tree Youth Commission?
So my mom appointed, my mom pointed it out to me, and I like love to get involved in the community. I love leadership opportunity. So I looked at it, and I was like, yeah, I definitely want to do something with Lone Tree.
Great, well, we are so excited to have you as part of the youth commission, and so you kind of heard from everybody already, but so there's not much more they're going to say to you, but you know, quickly go around, everybody. We don't have to repeat ourselves, but.
Great, live in person, there's no glitches here. I know we have some technical difficulties on your interview, so it's great. I know you've been extremely involved in the community in lots of different capacities, so we look forward to seeing what you'll do here.
Yeah, thank you.
And next.
Very exciting to have someone from Carriage Club representing.
Yeah.
So we're both Carriage Club people.
But we're not parochial. We love everyone equally and all neighborhoods equally.
That's true.
Yeah, stop it. Carriage Club thinks they're taking over. They're not, Rex. I apologize for them. No, all right, Kathy?
Yeah, we're really excited that you're a junior. It gives you a couple of years to serve on the commission, and we try to keep a mix of, you know, the different levels of school that are represented, so we're really thrilled to have you.
Thank you.
Well, welcome, Rex. With a name like that, we're expecting big things from you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, and we're going to allow again time for just a quick wipe down of the podium, is Sarah Paskey? Paskey, Sarah, welcome. And I think you know the question I'm going to ask, so.
Yeah.
Well, if you look at the way mine is, it's pronounced Malé, it looks like Malé, so I know there's a lot of consonants sometimes, they don't all add up to a vowel, so.
All right, well, hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Paskey. It's German. I go to Highlands Ranch High School. I am a senior, and I live in Heritage Hills. I got involved with youth commission because I had several friends who were on the commission, and they just made it sound like such a wonderful leadership opportunity and a way to give back to my community. And while I didn't really know what the youth commission did up until last year, they encouraged me to go out for the Youth of Lone Tree Award, and while I did not receive the award, I just felt the kindness and the wonderful amount of effort you guys put in and wanted to be a part of it myself. So in June, July, whenever that time was, applied for the youth commission, and I'm honored to get to be here today.
Well, I think we're honored to have you on the youth commission, so welcome. And I'm not going to make everyone go every time, but you got the gist, you know, you got everyone's name now, you got the whole deal, but I do want to let Jay and Kathy, who did interview you, have an opportunity to just say a quick hello to you in person.
No, and I appreciate you staying engaged, a member for the Outstanding Youth of Lone Tree Award process. It was a really tough one, really tight group, but I'm still glad you continued the dialogue with us, and you'll do awesome.
Thank you.
So thanks for staying engaged.
Yeah, I would just add to that, that you know, whenever we see great people coming out, that we can find a place for them to serve as part of the community, it's just wonderful for us, and we think for you, so welcome. I'm really glad you're here.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. All right, and finally, our last new commissioner is Riley Hamilton, who did win the Outstanding Youth of Lone Tree Award, and we had a very awkward presentation for Riley because it was one of our first virtual meetings. So we're very thrilled to actually have you here and see you and welcome you to our youth commission, and also to offer our congratulations to you for winning the Outstanding Youth of Lone Tree Award. And I think we just heard how eloquent, I want to make sure, Sarah Paskey was, so we know it was a tight competition for that Outstanding Youth of Lone Tree. And I know, I don't know if I feel sorry for you or I feel like you're lucky because Jay has to go through that really hard process. So anyway, Riley, tell us a little, we do know you a little bit better virtually, so.
Um, yeah, yeah, I'm so honored to be here and to meet you all in person after seeing you virtually. I am a senior at Ascend Classical Academy, just on the road, and I became interested in the youth commission actually through the Youth of Lone Tree Award. I heard about it at the end of my interview, and I've always been interested in civics and had a passion for leadership and service, and I've done a lot of that through volunteering and being in different clubs. And so I just saw this as an incredible opportunity, and I'm so honored to be here and to be a part of this excellent program.
Wonderful, well, welcome. And I think you did get a chance with everybody already. So I want to speak to all of you, the new, and you're so old, our tenured members of the youth commission who are here. You know, one of the most exciting things that happens in the city of Lone Tree is our Lone Tree Youth Commission. I think some of the remarkable work that you guys have done has been inspiring to us, but also has driven some policy work that we have done. And I think in particular, the we have continue, the bar continues to be raised for our youth commission and the work that comes out of the youth commission. So we, based on what we've seen and heard of you, we cannot wait to see what comes next. So welcome and thank you for your service, and we look forward to the day, hopefully, where I can come see you, and we won't be wearing these, but for now, let's keep them on and stay safe. So thanks. Thank you guys very much for being here tonight. So we're going to pivot now to the city grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Affairs on behalf of Kobel &amp; Company for proposed Ridgegate Station workforce housing apartments. And so Kelly is going to be here, our Community Development Director, in person, and we do have Carl Kobel and Luke Cannon with Kobel presenting remotely as presenter one, and I think Adam Morgan is also going to be connecting via phone. So we're going to start it off with Kelly.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just do a quick introduction before I turn it over to the team from Kobel &amp; Company to talk more about their proposed affordable housing project, which is going to be on the east side in Ridgegate, just next to the Ridgegate Parkway Station. And I should say that that project will come back before you, as well as the city planning commission, just as part of the normal SIP or Site Improvement Plan process. That is going through the Ridgegate DRC process right now, as I understand it, and they should be applying to the city relatively soon. But the focus of tonight's discussion is really on, more specifically, the anticipated funding for a portion of that project and the city's role in helping to assist in achieving that project. So as the folks from Kobel will explain further, funding for this project was originally intended to come from the Housing and Urban Development Home Investment Partnership Program through an application to the state Department of Local Affairs. And we learned later that those funds have been redirected by the state to other housing needs, mostly as a result of COVID. And so the pivot now has been to go for those funding opportunities in a different place, which is the Community Development Block Grant Program through the state of Colorado. So that's the application that is in process right now. The issue is that that funding source needs to go to a local government entity. It can't go to a private project directly. And so the city of Lone Tree, if the council agrees, would be the applicant on behalf of Kobel &amp; Company to apply for these CDBG funds that would assist in making this project feasible. Because we think the project is very consistent with the city's goals and vision for affordable housing on the east side, we are, you know, staff is supporting and recommending to proceed with this application process. And one of the requirements, I should say, of that process is that the city hold a public hearing, basically saying that we intend to apply to the state for the funding and offer the public the opportunity to comment on that. So with your approval, we are suggesting that that hearing could take place on October 6th, which is your next council meeting during your regular meeting. So in addition to the folks from Kobel tonight, I just wanted to point out that we do have our partners from Douglas County here this evening, should questions arise more around community development block grant funding. They've been very helpful and will continue to be very helpful in our application process. And certainly, if there's any questions that you might have tonight that none of us can answer, we will certainly follow back up with the state or whoever we need to for your next opportunity.
Okay, so are there any questions for Kelly before we turn it over to the presenters? Kelly, I just did have one. Because Douglas County had opted out of the CDBG monies, this doesn't in any way, and I know they're looking now to reapply and be back as part of the program, that doesn't bear any, doesn't influence this or impact this at all?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. My understanding of this is that this is going to come out of a sort of a different bucket of CDBG funding through a 2020 funding program that the state affords. So it's kind of a separate process than what the county would be involved in should they be reinstated into the CDBG program. In other words, my understanding is that this doesn't have to now go through the county process.
It's independent.
And compete against other projects, that it really is under the purview of the state funding program, for which funding is reserved for this purpose.
Great, and then when would we have an answer? Do you know that? Or do the Kobel folks have that? When will we find out?
They're going to cover that tonight.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Great, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so Kelly, are we turning it then over to presenter one, or who?
Yes, I believe Luke Cannon from Kobel &amp; Company is here to present.
Wonderful, Luke, can you hear us?
Yes, we can. Can you hear us?
Yes, wonderful.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. We appreciate your time. I'm Luke Cannon with Kobel &amp; Company, and joining me to my left is.
Everybody, you've got the A-team here. Luke's been running this project for us, but I'm still around, so I just wanted to say hi. So anyway, good to see all of you virtually.
Yes, well, welcome to you both. Looking forward to hearing this, so go ahead, Luke.
On the phone is Adam Morgan. Adam is a consultant of ours who has a lot of experience in affordable housing, and we worked with for many years, and he's joined us today as he is assisting us with the application for home funds as well. So that is a way, we had submitted a presentation, apologize.
Yep, just say advance, and they'll move it.
Yeah, advance, there we go. For those of you not familiar with the project, as Kelly mentioned, this is on the east side of 25, directly east of RTD's Light Rail Station, the new garage. The project Ridgegate Affordable Housing is 67 units, and if we can advance one more slide. On the right-hand side, you can see the map of the Lone Tree City Center. Highlighted in blue on the bottom center part of the page is the is the location of the site. The project consists of 67 units of workforce housing. It will have a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. The look and feel of the project will look very much like any other apartment building you would expect to see with high-quality materials and finishes throughout, both on the exterior and the interior as well. We will be achieving enterprise green community standards as required by CHAFA and as we strive to do on all of our projects. And certainly, the direct adjacency to the Light Rail Station and Bus Stop is a huge part of the project, helping residents that live here battle their two highest expenses in both transportation and housing costs. And one thing I would like to note is, we will be providing NICO passes for every unit in the project for a period of five years and hopefully longer, but we've committed to do that for the first five years, allowing residents free access to both light rail and bus transit from the Light Rail Station. Next slide, please. This is just a rough breakdown of the proposed unit mix for the property. As I noted, there's 39 one-bedrooms, 18 twos, and 10 threes. I've included a small site plan, or I say a floor plan of our one proposed bedroom, one-bedroom apartment, and then a picture of a recent project, a recent affordable project we completed up at Boulder. To the right of the screen is our AMI mix. We will have a mix of units ranging from 30% AMI to 80% AMI. For those of you not familiar with rents there, that basically means that 30% of one bedroom is going to cost an individual $562 a month, certainly providing some much-needed affordable units here to community, and we're quite proud that we're able to provide this mix. The average AMI, the weighted average is roughly 56.7%, so below 60% AMI for the entire building, which we're quite proud that we're able to get there with this project. If you can advance to the next screen, please. Brief breakdown of the amenities for both the units and the common areas in our proposed building. Each unit, like I said, will live and feel just like a market-rate apartment unit. Full kitchen, you know, washer and dryer inside every unit. We will be achieving, obviously, the low-energy requirements by enterprise green communities. The community area will have a gathering place, an indoor gathering place for the residents with a community entertainment center, a spot, a working area for individuals with laptops that work from the home, an outdoor space with a barbecue pit, and we will have a playground area as well for families that live on site, as well as indoor bike storage and covered parking spaces for 37 cars on site. The project will be parked one-to-one, so each unit will have a parking space. And as I mentioned earlier, we are providing NICO passes for every unit for the first five years. Next slide, please. So that gets into the ask for tonight. I've illustrated here the sources and uses for the project, and I've highlighted the home funds that Kelly mentioned at the beginning of our presentation to show the source of funds that we are applying for and will need the city's assistance as an applicant. Next slide, please. Just a small brief description of the home program. It was created by National Affordable Housing Act of 1990, and they provide competitive funding to local government, nonprofit, and private developers, obviously to both for sale and direct rental assistance to low-income individuals. Next slide, please. This is our, roughly, the history of where we are today. We applied for CHAFA funding at the end of January, specifically January 30th, 2020. We presented to the board of CHAFA in May of 2020, and were awarded funding in June of 2020. Shortly thereafter, in July, we reached out to DOLA regarding the home funds that we had previously confirmed with them during our application, only to be informed that COVID budget changes had allocated the funds they were initially planning to use for our application. We were told that additional funds were available through the CDBG, and that's when we started conversations with them about next steps and how do we move this forward going down that path. We've had a conversation with both Douglas County and Lone Tree staff about this process. We've put together the application that we've submitted to staff for their initial review so they can get an idea of what is needed. And because the funds can now no longer be directly contributed to us as a private developer, must run through a local government entity, that is where we are requesting the city's participation as the applicant and would need their sign off as the applicant to, in order to obtain the funds. Next slide, please. Moving forward, this is the proposed timeline we are looking for. Obviously, with city approval here, we would like to conduct a public meeting at the next city council meeting on October 6th. The application has been completed. It's just a matter of city agreeing to be the applicant and sign off by the city on the official application that we would then submit for the funding. That would be reviewed shortly, that would be submitted shortly after the public hearing, which must be held before we could submit the application. Starting November 1st, DOLA would then begin review of the applications. They would make their recommendations to the state housing board in mid-December, and we would receive an award letter shortly thereafter. Based on that timing, it would be roughly 60 to 90 days to complete the necessary paperwork and the contract, and we think that ties in nicely with our current plan of when we expect the site improvement plan to be approved, which would allow construction to then begin in early second quarter of next year. With regards to the site improvement plan, we have been proceeding forward with all design work. We have been through two rounds with the Design Review Committee at Ridgegate, and we have our third review scheduled in exactly 16 days, which we hopefully will have approval then to move forward with the site improvement plan submittal. We have gone through the pre-submittal process with the city and received positive feedback, and with this latest sign off, hopefully on Thursday, the 26th, we will then submit for the site improvement plan and move that forward. So with that, that is the rough breakdown of where we are today and the reason for our request this evening, and I'd like to turn that over and open it up to questions.
Thank you. We'll get rid of that echo, and I'll look to council, are there any? And this is, I think, very important that we address all the questions tonight because it will be a public hearing next time, so if there is anything that you want a little more information on or to dig into a little bit, let's get after it. So thoughts, anybody, any questions? Win, go ahead.
Just a comment that I'm glad there was some option available when the home funds were not. And I guess my only question would be if, for some reason, the CDBG funds don't come through, what the options would be?
So Luke, yeah, could you, did you hear the question?
I did, yes. So it certainly makes life much more difficult with regards to then, A, either trying to identify another funding source, and B, really getting into the design and the construction and trying to figure a way where there's any possible way to save costs. It would be certainly a detriment to the project, both the look and the feel, and we feel like the project that we would like to build and we think the city would definitely want to see is one that would be much better if these funds are available, and that's why we are certainly trying very hard to make sure that they are awarded to us.
I think it is challenging to speculate on what we hope never happens.
Right.
So I think what we would like to say is the city is committed to the project, and we appreciate your flexibility and resilience, and if COVID has taught us anything, it's how to pivot. So we'll be your partners in pivoting, I think, is what we're, the point we're trying to make. Yeah, any other thoughts, Mike, Kathy?
No.
No? We're good. Okay, well, hopefully, your review with the issuance from the state or CDBG will be as easy as this, so I think we're on board and look forward to seeing this at our next council meeting, okay?
Right, thank you very much. We're very excited to move this project forward, and we truly appreciate the city's participation.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks, Luke, and thanks, Carl, wherever you are. All right, and Kelly, thank you very much for your stewardship on this. Appreciate it. I think we all had a lot of questions at first, like, what happened? I thought this was a done deal, so, all right, thank you. Moving on, and thank you to everyone from the county who was on the call as well. Thank you also to Jennifer Eby and Tina Dell. We appreciate you being available. Thank you. All right, moving on to local nicotine product regulation and Austin Good, and this is another wonderful initiative that our youth commission has been very engaged with. So Austin, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. We're really excited to begin these discussions because this was a youth commission-initiated project, and so actually, we'll go to the next slide. We've got a lot to talk about tonight. This is a really heavy policy decision that we need a lot of council guidance for. A lot of it kind of lives in philosophy and what we think is going to be most effective for the Lone Tree community for keeping tobacco out of the hands of youth. And so this is a summary of some of the council direction that we're going to be asking for tonight. We don't need to make any final decisions or anything, but we wanted to get a temperature on what your opinions are on myriad of different, myriad of different topics. So first up is licensing. We're going to talk about what a license looks like and what, how that might look. But, you know, first off, should the city have its own tobacco retailer license? Is council agreeable to make an administrative license unlike our liquor licenses, which have public hearings? And there's also a proposed fee structure, or some looking at different cities' fee structures that we're going to be showing you tonight. Regulations and enforcement, we're going to touch a little bit on a recent state House bill that was passed that created a distance requirement from schools, and so we're going to see what your opinions are as far as how that fits in Lone Tree. Age of possessions, we're all aware that the age of sale for tobacco products has been increased to 21, however, the age of possession has not been. And so deciding what we're going to do on the local level is something that we'd like your guidance on. And then if you're agreeable to a modeling and suspension fine system, what that looks like for retailers for licensing, if we were to do an individual license and then enforcement checks that go along with that. And then finally, public outreach and what that looks like as far as reaching out to our tobacco retailers or anyone else to be involved in this process. So again, I mentioned that this is a youth commission-initiated project, so I'm going to welcome up Laura Polito, who is a member of the youth commission, who is going to kick us off with a little reminder about the work the youth commission did way back in February, in the before times, and that'll lead us into some of our staff research and presentation. So Laura?
Good evening to the city council and all present. It's been quite a while since I was last here, so I'm going to go ahead and reintroduce myself. My name is Laura Polito. I've served on the City of Lone Tree Youth Commission for about a year, and I'm also a volunteer through Lone Tree Teen Corps. I'm a freshman in high school at Highlands Ranch. Today, I'm here to talk about tobacco products and e-cigarettes. The youth commission first started to think about tackling the issue of tobacco products in October of last year, and we're very excited to see how this is taking off. We felt it was necessary to take action against epidemic of tobacco among today's youth as this has begun to leak into our schools and our community. I, myself, as a volunteer of teen corps, have seen firsthand how today's teens are being affected by it, and I'm glad to see that our city is stepping up to protect us. In order to get to this stage, we discussed with many different officials, including Taylor Roberts, the Chronic Disease Prevention Coordinator of the Tri-County Health Department. the Chronic Disease Prevention Coordinator of the Tri-County Health Department, and looked at other cities such as Denver, Glenwood Springs, and Aspen and their policies on e-cigarettes. With all this information compiled, we created a memo and presented to the city council our recommendations in February. We're absolutely thrilled that this project has come so far, and we look forward to city council's next steps. All right. So in December of 2019, the president signed the legislation amending the Federal Food Drug and Cocutenic Act. So he raised the tobacco products from age 18 to 21. In February 2020, the youth commission, as I mentioned earlier, recommended amending the Lone Tree Municipal Code, and I'm really glad to see that that's happening. In July 2020, the Colorado Senate passed House Bill 21,001, and they are implementing changes to the sale and possession of tobacco products.
Okay, before you go, I just have to say, wonderful job on your presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You know, I'm shocked you're a freshman. But I do know your siblings and your parents, so I see where you get it from, but really wonderful job.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
She set the bar. Hi, guys. Are you taking notes over there?
I really got to echo that. Laura is...
I was talking about for you, Austin.
Good to echo that as well. So let's move on to the next slide and see if I can raise to that level.
Keep up!
I know, right? Seriously. So let's talk a little bit about the state legislation that was just passed. So again, this was passed just recently in July. What the state legislation does is it prohibits sale and distribution or gift of nicotine products to anybody under the age of 21 years old. And it does remove the criminal penalty for minors purchasing or possessing nicotine products. This is an important point and something for us to figure out what we want to do here in Lone Tree. Currently, within our municipal code, we have 18 years of the age of possession. And right now, that stands even though the age of sale is 21. There's a few different options we can look at there, and so we'll get into that. But the state essentially took itself out of creating rules around that. Go back, actually. I need to finish up that slide. What the state also does is it requires state licensing for retailers that sell cigarettes and tobacco products and nicotine products on July 1st, 2021. So unless we took local action to either create our own license or do other actions, the state license does come into effect. And what it does do is it does still permit us of the local government to also license retailers that sell cigarettes and tobacco products. And it would be a dual license with the state. And it also allows for us to create more stringent regulations on the local level. Some other things that it does is it does impose a 500-foot distance requirement from schools. We'll get into what that looks like in Lone Tree later in the presentation. But we, as a locality, do have the option to either eliminate that or create a more strict distance requirement. It also imposes restrictions on retailers, like no advertising of vaping products visible from the outside. Employees must be at least 18 years to be able to handle the products. And vending machines can only be located in age-restricted areas of retail outlets. And it also requires state and local authorities to collaborate on compliance checks. So let's talk about age of possession. So this is a really interesting one that there's a few different options we can take on. The first option is to do nothing and leave our code at 18 years of age, just like it sounds. For folks under 18, they could be written a ticket for minor possession of tobacco products. For folks over the age of 18, even though they're not allowed to buy those in retail outlets, if they were found with them on their person or smoking, they wouldn't be written a minor possession charge. We could increase the age of possession to 21. What this does is it aligns it with the age of sale, but it also punishes young adults between 18 and 21 with that minor possession charge, similar to how alcohol might be. And then finally, we could ultimately get rid of age of possession in the city. What this does is it really focuses our intents on age of sale and follows the state legislation. So what are our neighboring cities doing? There's a lot up there, and I could anticipate some of this might change. So Douglas County is currently 18. Parker did raise their age to 21. Castle Rock is at 18 still. Castle Pines remains at 18. Centennial at 18. And then Greenwood Village did increase their age to 21. And now I'm going to welcome up Jay Robb, our city clerk, to discuss retail licensing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Kind of just switching back and forth here, and we will have an opportunity for questions either during my time in front of you or at the end, giving it back to Austin. So we're going to talk to you a little bit about the local retail licensing and whether or not the council wants to go down this path and require a local license in addition to the state tobacco license. These are our current tobacco vendors. There are 11 of them, and we collected this list from the State Department of Revenue because they track it through their tobacco sales. And we'll come back to this with a better visual in a couple of slides. Here's where our current neighbors stand as far as local licensing, with only Castle Pines taking initiative to enact local licensing last year. When we talk about fines, we took a survey of different cities throughout the state. Remember, when we set the fee schedule every year, we tried to base those on the cost of time that staff takes to process individual tasks or licenses in this case. So you kind of see the different cities and where they are on the range.
Sorry, can you go back? That was a little too fast. I was still looking.
Yeah, that second bullet, there's also a license that focuses on non-tobacco products, such as vaping products.
Thank you.
So we are recommending a local license, and there are the costs that we have assessed for us to process for our 11 businesses in the city. Yes, Councilmember Shaw?
So a non-tobacco vaping product would be the equipment?
Oh, I think it's just...
Or just flavored?
Yeah, the flavor...
That doesn't have nicotine?
Right.
Okay.
The flavors, and then also, I think, I think chewing tobacco might be in that category. So cigarettes, cigarettes are licensed under one license. And then some cities have carved out cigarettes to be a different type of license and only licensing vaping products. What am I trying to say? The vaping solution, I guess? If that makes sense. So cigarettes...
Why would they do that, Jay? What's the reasoning behind?
I'm not sure. I guess just because more of this legislation came out of concerns about vaping, vaping in teens, some of the deaths that we saw throughout the country. And so I think at the local level, they said, let's license vaping products and leave...
Cigarettes alone?
Cigarette sales, yeah, to the state. Thanks for letting me come back and focus on that point. So as I was saying, this is kind of the cost we assessed for Lone Tree to process our local licenses to the 11 vendors that are in the city. If council decides to go this way, we already have a form drafted, and we'd be quick to execute a licensing process.
Yeah, Wynne, go ahead.
One other question. So the cost of a license has only to do with the processing of the license? Or can it have something to do with the annual checkups and...
Compliance?
Compliance checks, yeah.
I think you can accumulate all the costs of staff time and compliance checks. I'm looking over at Linda to make sure she agrees with me, in the annual cost of the license and for the renewal cost. We'll talk a little bit more about enforcement.
Which clearly you didn't. If it's $50 for the renewal... So clearly, you just focused on the administrative costs associated with processing a license.
Yeah, so that's the upfront cost of $100 for the new license and then the $50 annual renewal fee. And that's... We only charge like $125 for liquor license annual renewals at the local level. And so we try to calculate for those costs. Yeah. For compliance checks.
Yep.
We'll check with Lone Tree PD to make sure we have an accurate cost assessed for compliance checks and the administrative process.
It might look more like...
The partners, other than... Yeah.
But yeah, we were surprised that Castle Pines came in so low. Right.
I think the city manager should say that a little louder.
They don't have a weird department.
Right, so they're not bearing the compliance check costs.
So I want to get into the distance requirements because this will be another decision point for a council. Here is a map of the schools that are in the City of Lone Tree and our current tobacco retailers. The only one that's within a 500-foot... I'm sorry, there are two retailers within a 500-foot radius of Lone Tree Elementary School. And that's the Phillips 66 Gas Station and Safeway. Because these exist and they're within the 500 feet, we might have some decisions to debate in the first draft of the ordinance about how we measure that distance and how we grandfather those existing businesses into the city's regulations. And like I said, the state now imposes a 500-foot distance requirement from schools. Local jurisdictions can reduce the 500-foot spacing or eliminate different types or categories of schools. I know we kind of went down that path when we talked about the 500 feet from different schools in Lone Tree that we already have or different types of schools that may move into the area. Yeah, so existing businesses within the distance requirements would be grandfathered in. And many municipalities have already adopted distance requirements, preventing retailers from being within 500 to 1,000 feet of a school or areas they consider a youth center where youths collect.
Youths collect. You can tell you don't have children.
Right.
Come to my house.
Schools, there's... Jay, we're teasing you.
We also want to have a discussion about violations for our tobacco retailers. And this is a large table to kind of show how different cities are addressing first, second, third violations, you know, if they should sell to an underage buyer during a fail of compliance check and kind of the penalties that would be assessed. We're recommending that those would be assessed administratively, and we could outline that in the code that we present to council. So again, staff recommends that we utilize an administrative system for fines and suspension. The advantages would be that fines and suspensions, they set and they make fines issuance easier and more transparent, hopefully faster to process if we had a violation. Administrative actions for violations enable a faster response to the violations and reduce the overhead for staff. And this model would be effectively addressed to address most violation issues within the city. So I know that that was a lot to chew on with the cost of new licenses, distance requirements, and enforcement. But it's just many things that you'll consider as we move forward with this draft ordinance. And with that, if you have any questions, I'll go ahead and take them now or...
We've been peppering you, but anything else? I think we've got some comments, and it probably would be helpful if you went back to that original slide that listed all the questions.
We actually have a little bit more.
Oh, there is more? Okay. Oh, you're back on?
Yeah, there's a couple more slides.
Hey, you weren't kidding when you said this was a lot. You're going to have to go back because we're taking it in chunks. Yeah.
You know, a lot of this is really... It really comes down to that panel used discussion of, you know, what priorities you'd like to set for the community. And so Jay, if you could actually go to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about enforcement here. And this is looking at the past enforcement of age of possession from Lone Tree Police Department for minor and possession charges. So they've charged that 22 times within the last three years, so it is not a very common ticket that they write. 18 of these incidents were a secondary charge after they were already caught for another crime like shoplifting. And it was only charged as the primary offense four times in the last three years at a local high school. And so it's one of those where the enforcement of age of possession is not very heavily used, which, getting back to the discussion about whether we have age of possession in our code in the first place and whether that's a tool, that's whether tobacco is really one of those more community-driven, school-driven, parent-driven discussions or whether that's something that you give a kid a ticket for, that's a discussion for us to have. Jay, if you could actually go to the next slide. Looking at retail compliance checks. So we talked a little bit about the cost of administrative time. The Lone Tree Police Department looked at what it would look like for them to go out and do retail compliance checks, assuming that they did one check on each resale establishment annually. Essentially, to do with the 11 establishments in Lone Tree, it would take two detectives and one buyer to complete those checks, and it would take one day for those checks to be conducted.
And do you have the cost?
I don't have those costs off the top of my head. Chief, if you're online and you know that off the top of your head, feel free to chime in, but I don't think those numbers are here, and we can bring those back to you.
I think we would absolutely want to see those.
Absolutely. And then finally, some public outreach. If council decides to move forward with a license, staff would recommend that we reach out to tobacco retailers ahead of time to make sure that we're able to get their feedback. There's licensing all over the state now, and particularly with the state licensing coming through. At the very least, we'd like to communicate what's happening with the state licensing to our local retailers. But also, we might get some feedback from some of our chains about their experience with licensing in other jurisdictions. And then also, if you could actually go back, we would assume that general community input would be collected through the normal ordinance process through public hearings. Okay, now we're back to our council direction slide. So Mayor, if you'd like, I can facilitate this. If you'd like to kick it off with the list on screen.
I think, let's just start with the first question. Should the city create its own tobacco license? And again, we don't make decisions, we just give feedback. But I'm thinking the feedback in general is, yes, we want to proceed with this process, assuming I see...
Can I just get a point of clarification?
Of course you can.
So just wanted to be clear. So if we establish our... Is the main benefit the enforcement of it all?
Yes.
So even if, when the state law kicks in next year, we locally cannot enforce that rule?
We wouldn't have control over the enforcement. And Linda, if you can correct me, I think the state would still enforce with coordination with locality, but we wouldn't have the control over their enforcement.
Yes, that's correct. The state would enforce and would rely on the local law enforcement agency to cooperate with them in that enforcement effort, but we would not be the lead.
So we wouldn't initiate that process?
No.
So that's the difference, okay.
And the state bill contemplates two compliance checks a year, assuming that the state and local jurisdictions have money budgeted for that.
And there would be no compensation back to the municipalities from the state? We would just be their partners in doing it. And I think Kathy had a follow-up.
Yeah, so the only thing I don't want to over... I don't want it all bundled together in the way that we give direction. So what we do for the sale of the product, I want to be considered separately than what we would do between the 18 and 21 enforcement.
So the age of possession issue is...
Two very different conversations, and I just want to make sure that as we give direction, that there's...
Right.
You know, what we do around the sale, which I believe is incumbent on us to do something to support what's been decided. And then on the enforcement, it's a more practical conversation about...
Age of possession, which is right. We're in the licensing column right now. So should we move forward with licensing, the next step in having staff move forward on this? And I'm sounding like yes. And I am very much an advocate for having this be done administratively and not putting a burden on them to have to come before council on this. So I'm seeing administrative. We're all in agreement there. The proposed fee structure, you know, council always likes to be in line with what other partners are doing. We don't want to be ahead and we don't want to be behind. I think Wynne raised some good points about the enforcement. I think we'd like to have you explore those costs and including them in. I think we do want to keep this low, though, the cost low. So... Right. We don't want to make it any more difficult for people to do business in the city. But, all right, is that fair? Is that fair direction? Mike, if something else you want to add to that, or are you good with that?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. So I think you've gotten the direction on the licensing. Okay, all right, so I think you've gotten the direction on the licensing. So now the requirement for distance from schools. I think it's very challenging as we have seen charter schools and magnet schools move into properties where they were not zoned for school, and then we've had the issue where we've had a business that operated before the school got there that had a liquor license, and then the building next, the restaurant next door couldn't have a liquor license, and I think in the old days, this was a lot, when everything happened according to zoning, it was a little bit different. I think this is much more challenging, and I think we don't, if we had a high school or a middle school in the city of Lone Tree, and we do have Eagle Academy and Ascent actually goes up through high school, those are the ones that present a challenge to me. I'm not as concerned with them being as close to the elementary schools. So I'm struggling with this one, and I guess can we, my question is, could we make it, the distance only apply to a middle school or a high school?
I believe we can by exempting elementary school.
Yes.
And I guess I'm just curious, and I'm not saying that's where I want to go, but that's where I'd like to start the conversation, is I for sure would like to exempt the location, the distance requirement? Go ahead.
Yeah, for sure, anything that's in place now, we would want to actually exempting. And I do think it's a very hard thing to manage, as small as we are, and with all the different changes we have, I think that was a pretty hard one to-
But we, this is going to be in effect as we develop on the east side. This is something that I'm sure council is going to be revisiting, but just like that first council 25 years ago, probably couldn't contemplate, well, or the Safeway, or the restaurant in the Safeway Shopping Center, that there ever being a school right next to it, that was not contemplated. So, so, so this one, I guess I'm more inclined to look at, and it sounded like we didn't have any existing stores, retailers that were in close proximity to, is that true or am I mistaken on that?
So just Lone Tree Elementary is within the state's 500-foot requirement.
Right.
But extending a little bit past that, Eagle Academy is pretty close to Freaky's on Yosemite. It's outside of the 500-foot distance, but it's relatively close, I can tell you off the top of my head.
But it's out of it, so it's not, it is, so if we did put a 500-foot from a middle school or a high school, and I'm not saying that, I'm just asking the question, it wouldn't impact any of our existing businesses.
We could grandfather those in, and the state bill is grandfather-
Safeway and the 66.
No, I said if we, I said middle school and high school. It's not near, it's not within 500 feet, Austin, of any middle school or high school.
No.
So we could make that rule today, and it would not impact any of our existing businesses.
Correct.
Thanks, okay. That's probably where I'm leaning, guys, because then as we look on the east side, we are going to have middle schools and high schools going in over there. So that's my-
And it's kind of known where they're going to be.
Exactly.
So-
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I'm inclined to start there, is anybody?
Thanks, Ben.
I'm okay with that.
Is everyone okay? All right.
Just to be clear, so they'd be grandfathered in anyway if we didn't exclude, you know, Lone Tree Elementary, right? Because-
We're, yeah, but I don't want to do it for elementary-
We're just mainly doing proactively planning.
Well, if we, if we just went with what the state has-
They'd be out.
We would, no, but we could still grandfather it now.
Yeah, but then, but then you guys, just like we did with the liquors, we ran into the problem where store A is allowed the privilege, store B then comes in later and isn't, and it's just, it's just not, it's just an even playing field-
Yeah.
-in my mind, so if it doesn't impact any of our existing businesses, it's more of a threat with a middle school or high school. We'll exempt elementary schools, but it can't be within 500 feet of a middle school or a high school is the direction so far.
Okay.
Jack, just for clarifications, the term where youth collect-
Yeah.
Thinking about the rec center and thinking about development on the east side, whether or not there are some locations that may fall into that category where youth are after school?
Yep, so I don't, I don't, I'm okay with it just being the schools. You raise a very fair point, so I would, if you have a proposal there, I would entertain it, but I just think at some point, we can't, I mean, we'd be preventing the sale-
Where do you draw the line?
Yeah, around any park.
Youth starts to collect wherever they want to collect.
Stop calling them collecting, they, they gather, they gather. And the, right, and the new park right at, right by the city office building-
Keeping it to school.
Would create problems there, right there. I just, I hear you.
I just think it's a concern, I'm not sure how to deal with it, but what do people do after school, and if they choose to pursue this and it's available in proximity, it's a potential problem.
Can you explore what others have done beyond just the prohibitions from schools?
Yeah, absolutely.
Curious to learn what others are doing on that, and come back to us with that. So now, the big question, we'll let Kathy have the floor. No, 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 go back, isn't that the age of possession? Should the, should the age of possession be unchanged, increased to 21 or eliminated? Go Kath.
I'll just be, I would not be comfortable increasing it to 21. I would be comfortable leaving it unchanged or eliminating it.
I would-
I can talk about lots of reasons.
Eighteen, at all, in my eyes, so, yep.
Yeah. So Mike, you have anything on this one? I, I agree with Kathy. I, I really think there should be a county-wide age on this. I think it's hard to have it piecemealed, I'm wondering if there is, and you know, you might be the, with the youth initiative-
Partnership, or-
Yeah, with the Douglas County Youth Initiative.
Tomorrow.
Right, right.
Yeah, we have partnership tomorrow.
I do feel very strongly that this should be a county-wide, it's, I mean, these kids go in and out of communities, they cross borders to go to their schools, I just think-
Yeah, that's something I could bring up, for sure.
And so given that, I would just keep it unchanged, in my opinion, for now. I mean, that's where I'm leaning, but I-
Me too.
Because I would, I actually think it should be consistent, and I could live with what our partners in the county is on, we're weighing in on it as well. So that's-
But I'm not very comfortable then if the county decides 21.
Well, we can, you know, we can, we can advocate for a position, and that's our-
So I'm not agreeing that whatever the county decides is-
And never, we're never giving away, we're not, it would be a Douglas County Youth Initiative process, just like the curfew was, and different communities had different curfew times, and we kind of came together and as one had decided, but you're right, we're never giving our decision-making authority away to anybody. Just ask my children, no, I'm just kidding. So I think that's enough for now on that one.
Yeah, and that's enough council guidance, that we can come back to you with more research and can start reaching out to partners.
The enforcement check, I'm skipping that one because I'm not sure what the-
And apologies, that actually is from a earlier version of the presentation, Denver part, but essentially, if you're comfortable with a fine and suspension model similar to our partners at the big table Jay had pulled up earlier, or if you want us to dig into something either more restrictive, less restrictive. Actually, Jay, if you could go back to that slide, that might help. Yeah.
Meaning fine and suspension for the vendors?
Right.
Yeah.
So this is looking at first through fourth offenses?
Within three years.
And I have a question, is it, is it suspending the sale of just the nicotine product, or is it shutting the store down? Because when we've had liquor license violations, we, if they keep having them, we get to the point where we shut the whole store down, or we shut the whole restaurant down, so, so I don't want to shut the whole store down for the first violation, so, so help me understand that in your process.
Yeah.
The tobacco license, okay, okay. Oh, so the restaurants are just, a lot of times choose to shut down when they can't sell liquor. Got it, thank you Seth, okay.
So we do see fines, so if there's suspension, we can just pull just tobacco, we can take that. Fines range between, you know, 500, 500 seems to be a comment for a first offense, escalating around 1,000, 1,500 for a second offense. Are you comfortable kind of exploring that chain of escalation, or do you guys have any other opinions? Would you want to skew lower, more strict?
I'm fine with keeping it in line with what others are doing, and, yeah, I mean, I-
Probably not a fourth offense, I think.
So-
I think three strikes is plenty.
Oh, to the license revocation?
Don't you think?
Yeah, I mean, you can bring us back some options on that, and I would love to confine it more to the metro area communities if there's more of them looking at this now than some of other partners. Again, I think being consistent across the area where the kids are collecting. All right, go back, I think the last one-
We can get more phone questions.
Yeah, we're okay with enforcement checks, right? Yep, we're okay with that.
Okay, and then finally, public outreach, reaching out to tobacco retailers ahead of the ordinance.
Absolutely.
Yes, sooner rather than later on that one for-
And one question, so didn't we say they're twice annual checks?
They could be.
So for the states.
So whatever, I'm agreeable to standard enforcement checking.
Yeah, but a minimum, I think we want to hear.
At least once.
Once a year, you outlined.
And then we want to see the costs on that.
Yeah.
All right, so I think that, I think that covers it.
Yes, thank you so much.
And you even left us some time, Austin, we can do some other things in our study session, and it's you.
And it's me, but yeah, first, thank you for your guidance on that. We're excited to get together staff and really start sorting through that and bringing stuff back to you for further discussion, and we'll try to get the outreach to the tobacco retailers done before we bring this back to you so that you can see that discussion as you're talking through things, so really appreciate your time on this.
Thank you, Austin, and we'll let you get the next presentation keyed up, and we want to say thank you, Laura, and thank you to all the commissioners who were able to stay tonight to hear this conversation, and we look forward to you engaging on this process as well. Okay, thanks, all right. So our posed model here at the EV charging station.
He's actually, it was really great, he came out before the ribbon cutting, so we could do a little photo shoot for the press release. We wanted to give you an update on how those charging stations are doing at Lincoln Commons. So I'll make this quick because we know we have a very full agenda today. We, this, these stations have been seeing really, really great use. Talking to some folks that are in the industry, they're seeing very, very strong usage, and it's particularly because of the location, the access to so many retailers and restaurants, it just makes it a really natural place for people to want to plug in for a little bit. And also the walkability, you can actually walk to a lot of things from there, instead of just being limited to the one retailer when you park, so. We were seeing a really great steady increase in sessions, reaching over 150 sessions in February of this year, and then coronavirus happened, and we saw a really, really steep decline, which is to be expected, people are out moving less and less, but it is interesting to see how the recovery is taking place through the usage of the charging stations. We're almost kind of at that record in February month, and we might actually hit that this September, October, so.
It's almost like a sales tax chart, right?
Yeah.
Looks very similar, but it doesn't-
Can overlay it on that.
So just some data points for you, actual charging sessions at those, at those stations. So as a reminder, we have five plugs, they served 145 sessions in August. So far in 2020, we've had 854 plugins in the all-time, so since May of 2019, when these were put online, just over 1,500 uses, so we think that's really strong usage for this location for brand-new chargers.
Austin?
Yes.
What is the potential? In other words, if-
Max.
The max, right?
So that's really hard to say, because when people plug in, their battery charge differs, so some people are just plugging in the top off for a few minutes, some people are plugging in for hours on end. There are some chargers in downtown areas where they have to do more user management, you actually have to reserve a time at the charger. We haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, we're not there yet.
And actually, one of the positives for our location is because we put five plugs in one location, there's usually always an open plug.
Okay.
Almost always, and so that helps us with management, so we don't actually have to turn anyone away from filling up. But yeah, I couldn't speak to an exact max on the number of people I could plug in.
But no, that gives me a feeling that, that we are not maxed out.
Well, we're not near maxed out.
Very, very good.
Yeah, that's a good thing. And then unique drivers, so this is actually looking at unique people that are plugging in instead of just the sessions, 58 this month, 264 so far this year, and 510 total, so that's about three plugins per user, if you did that quick calculation, obviously a lot, some people have a lot more, some folks just plug in one time, but we think that's a good sign that we're really hitting a mix of folks that are traveling regionally, but also folks that are living in the area that are using these on a regular basis. And then finally, revenues, so we are charging for the use of these chargers, and all the monies are going to Rampart Range Metro District, who's actually the ones that are operating these. So we think there's a really strong revenue totals for the chargers, but most of this amount, in fact, all of this amount is going back into the operations of those chargers, there's an annual maintenance plan, the cell phone connection, as well as the electricity to actually run them. And Rampart Range Metro District actually recently, XL reached out to them, and they're going to have to change their rate structure because of how much they're being used, and so there might be a little bit of tweaky of the pricing to make sure that Rampart can fully absorb those costs. But this month, about $500 brought in, 3,000 brought in so far in 2020, and our all-time total is $4,484. And just council, have any questions?
Okay, anything else? I think it's great, thanks for the presentation and the update, and I'm glad they're getting used. All right, we're moving on. Thanks, Austin, to discussion concerning ordinance and mending the curfew for solicitors in Chapter 6 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code, Linda Meechow. Linda, all of yours, I should get paid by the word.
That's what we do, right?
I know.
Thank you for allowing me to present tonight, mayor and city council members. I think I have touched on this topic before, so this should come as no surprise to you, but I'm here to present on one of the city's regulations regarding commercial solicitation, and that, that only relates to the issue of the curfew. Next slide. So what we're going to talk about briefly here today, because I know we don't have a lot of time, is I just want to give you a quick overview of the city's ordinance and the legal framework around First Amendment rights and protections, the outcome of litigation around Castle Rock's curfew on commercial solicitors, a quick comparison of Castle Rock's basis and the city's, and then what our recommendation would be moving forward. Next slide. The Lone Tree's regulations are found in Chapter 6 under your licensing programs, and it does require that solicitors register with the city. So that protection is in place now, and that won't change regarding the curfew. There's also a no-visit list or a no-knock list that the city maintains, and that allows residents of the city to be put on a list that is then provided to the solicitors and hawkers and peddlers for them not to visit those residences. There's also a requirement that the solicitors not enter properties that are posted with a no-trespassing or no-soliciting sign. And then, of course, there's that pesky provision about the hours of solicitation, and solicitors are only allowed to visit between 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM, or 30 minutes after sunset. Next slide. So commercial speech is protected under the First Amendment. And so if we're going to regulate commercial speech as we are with non-commercial speech, the courts have found that we must identify a substantial governmental interest in the regulation, and the ordinance must then demonstrate that the harms that it relies upon are actually real, and that's the causal link, I think, that we have found might be missing in Lone Tree's ordinance. And I will say, just going back to that slide, that is only three bullets, but really, there's like 100 years of judicial opinions on this, and there are a lot of nuances, but boiled down, we've got to have a substantial governmental interest, and that interest has to be protected through restrictions that are narrowly tailored, right, to target the actual harms, and they have to be actual harms that the city has experienced. Next slide. So in Castle- ... viable, and the 10th Circuit Court of Appeals, which is a federal court that has jurisdiction over Colorado, determined that no, Castle Rock failed to show that the curfew advanced the city's interests in public safety and citizen privacy. And that case was initiated by Active Environmental, which was a pest control service company. They had been very successful doing door-to-door solicitations in other communities such as Denver, and they got into Castle Rock and actually complied with the regulations regarding registration- regarding registration, complying with the no knock list, and also complying with the curfew. And what they found is their sales were about half of what they were doing in other communities. So they pulled out of Castle Rock after a week, only a week, of soliciting there, and then they filed a lawsuit against Castle Rock, saying that they have, the city violated their First Amendment rights. On that slide. So there's a lot of text on this screen. This is just to show you what sort of evidence was presented during the case against Castle Rock, and this was Castle Rock's defense of its regulation on the curfew. And they actually had a lot of evidence presented, not only evidence presented prior to and in support of adoption of the regulation, but post-adoption of the regulation. They presented citizen complaints, they had city council members testifying about conversations they had with residents, they used anecdotal evidence, they had testimony from the police chief as well. The problem with all of this, I mean, it all sounds really great, right? Throw a lot of spaghetti against the wall, and some of it will stick. But what the problem is, the court found that there was actually no reports, no substantive data to establish that commercial solicitors arriving at residents' homes after 7:00 PM actually created a public safety risk. There were zero crimes reported around that circumstance, right? There were, and with regard to the privacy rights, they had a lot of folks testify generally about not wanting anyone at their door at any time during the day, but the court found that there was really no concrete evidence to establish that commercial solicitors arriving on someone's doorstep after 7:00 PM actually violated someone's privacy rights and interests. So despite all this evidence that Castle Rock presented, the Tenth Circuit and the district court below it found in favor of the plaintiff in that case and struck down the curfew. Next slide. So just by comparison, and I'm not going to go through these either, but really, Lone Trees justifications are found on the face of its ordinance. I couldn't find any information or evidence that was presented during any public hearing when the ordinance was approved back in 2011, as well as in 2018. And I believe that the city updated the regulation in 2018 to be in compliance with what it thought the court was going to conclude after the U.S. District Court case, but then it went up to appeal in the Tenth Circuit, and ultimately, I think those changes aren't going to pass judicial muster moving forward. Next slide. Yes.
So did the plaintiff receive any compensation, or they just had to undo the ordinance?
Correct, yes, no compensation, as far as I know. And yeah, as far as I know, Castle Rock has, it hasn't, wasn't enforcing it during the pendency of the litigation, and I believe has repealed or is considering repealing the curfew.
Okay, thanks.
So based on this state of affairs, I would like to present an ordinance to city council moving forward to repeal the city's existing curfew. And that's not to say that the city couldn't reconsider it in the future, but what we'd need to do is really be diligent about collecting evidence, citizen complaints, reports, crime statistics, that would actually support a curfew. And assuming that we had that kind of information, then we'd be happy to present that to council again. And ultimately, you know, the ordinance that's in place will stay in place with respect to registration of solicitors and the other protections that the city has provided residents. And residents themselves have the opportunity, right, the private right, to exclude solicitors from their property and can post no soliciting signs to the extent that that is effective. So we're not, you know, gutting the entire ordinance, but our recommendation is, is for city council to consider repeal of that section. And I'm happy to answer any questions for city council.
I think that was a very thorough presentation. Questions from council on this?
No, no questions. It seems like the right thing to do. I think we talked about this last time, but I just want to say it again. I do think some education when we do this, through our communication methods of what you can do, that are even more powerful, I think, right? You know, having this, it would be a really important thing that we do to assist. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, didn't we even talk about having, and this was pre-COVID, so I don't know what it costs, but even no trespassing with the Lone Tree logo or some.
We've, we've got some that we'll get out.
Right, so I do think as we move to the, move through the process with this ordinance, let's also beef up our communication about what we can do. So, and Lynda, thank you very much. It was a really good presentation.
I.
Yes.
Just a quick comment, and I, I still, I, I understand what you're saying, and I know that we need to do this. I'm still unclear how the FCC, through Do Not Call, can restrict hours that someone can be contacted, but we can't do it in person. And I, I just, I would like to understand more about why that could be. I certainly don't want the FCC not to be able to enforce hours, because I don't want all the junk calls at 2:00 in the morning or whatever, but I, I don't know.
Well, I think it's, it's very frustrating that we can't, as a city, say, it's annoying, and that's enough.
Exactly.
But we can't.
It's dark, stay away from my house.
Right, or, or, yeah, this is my private time with my family. I don't want an unsolicited knock on my door. So it, it, I agree. I think we're all there, Wynne. It's just, the reality is, the Tenth Circuit made this ruling, and we don't want to be in.
And you know the Tenth.
Right. Yeah, my friends at the Tenth Circuit, how do I get appointed there? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have an update on the external auditor RFP process and audit committee recommendations, and I think Uli is going to lead it off, but then I think we're going to turn it over to Jay a little bit, too. Do you know that? Get ready.
Did you know that?
Good afternoon, as mayor, city council. Today, I would like to give just a brief update on the RFP process that we completed for external audit services and to just report back on the committee, audit committee recommendation. And just to set the stage on why are we even going out for our audit RFP, and that is, we just completed our fifth year with IBALE, it is best practice to rotate auditors on a regular basis, or at least the engagement partner. And it was a recommendation from the audit committee, and I keep looking at council member, Carpenter, who sits on the audit committee, so thank you for, for the guidance from the audit committee at this point as well. So next slide, please. Just to walk you briefly through the process that we completed, we issued the RFP in June, responded to any questions that were proposed by the audit firms that were, that were considering to reply. We reviewed the RFPs in August with the finance, finance team in the city, as well as one of the committee members, our vice chair of the audit committee, Peter Frenchman, was able to help out with a review of the RFPs, and we narrowed down with him the responses to a handful of RFPs, completed the interviews in August, and selected a finalist at the end of August. Next slide, please. We're very happy with the amount of the responses that we did receive. We received a total of eight responses, and I've listed all of the audit firms on this slide. The highlighted, or the, the firms with an asterisk, were selected for an interview process. And just to set the stage here again, too, the criteria for the evaluation of the firms is we looked at just their experience that they had with city audits, with other governmental clients within Colorado, we looked at the experience around SCFD, cost was a driver. We also looked at just their experience in terms of accounting standard implementations, as well as their experience for single audit. And due to receiving the CARES Act funding, we will be exceeding that threshold of $750,000 of federal money spent within a fiscal year, so we would need to undergo the single audit process this year, which is somewhat of a new process again for the, for the city to just bring back to life.
Can we use CARES money to pay for that?
We actually can, yes.
Good. They're making us do it.
As long as we expend this before December 30th, we are able to seek reimbursement for that.
Good.
So we moved forward with BKD, CLA, Haney and Company, and Planton Moran, who, they merged with EKS and H, some of you might be familiar with that group, in 2018. The reason why we did not move forward with IBALE, and I just wanted to touch on that briefly, is cost. They were by far, in terms of cost, the highest rank, so we did not move forward with them. Once we brought in BKD, CLA, Haney and Company, Planton Moran for the interviews, really there, we wanted to focus more on fit for the city. Can we work with them for that five-year period? We looked at their communication style, we really focused on staff turnover, we've seen, we like to see consistency in the key staff. It's almost like training a new employee each year if there's a lot of turnover. We looked at, can they meet our proposed timeline that we outlined in the RFP, as well as what is their approach around that transition? It's a heavy lift on, on, you know, the audit firm as well as the city, so just wanted to feel comfortable with that transition period. And we inquired about what are the training opportunities available for city staff to attend, what training resources do they have available to us? With that, and the next slide, please. We brought the information back to the audit committee, and again, I wanted just to reiterate their involvement in this process, and we appreciate very much their guidance throughout this whole process. So on Wednesday, September 2nd, we met again with the audit committee to discuss the RFP responses. We discussed the qualifications of all of the firms, and the recommendation from the audit committee was to select Haney and Company as the city's new audit firm. There was also the recommendation from the city staff, from the finance team, that took part in the RFP process. So a little bit about, on the next slide, please. Haney and Company, Haney and Company is a regional firm, they have an office located in Littleton, they do have experience with SCFD, with single audit, they have also had experience with the GFOA awards. They are able to provide annual governmental accounting training to us and resources available. They listed references as the City of Grand Junction, the City of Brighton, and the City of Fountain. And we did reach out, both our city manager and I, reached out to the City of Grand Junction just as a reference check to see if they're happy with the service that has been provided to them, and I'll just read a couple of the, the statements that they gave. They mentioned that they're very flexible and resourceful, consist, consistency in staffing, which is very important, as I touched on earlier. They provided guidance and research on complex journal entries, and in fact, the City of Grand Junction just renewed their contract for six years, an additional year outside of their fifth year, which I think, again, points out that they're happy with the services. Cost, and Haney and Company did come in lowest out of all of the firms that did reply to the, to our RFP. The cost of the city audit in SCFD, so the cost that we've incurred over the last years is lower than what we incurred last year. There is an additional cost for the single audit, which is that federal grant requirement, but even combined for the single audit, as well as the city audit in SCFD, we're coming in just around the 2020 budgeted amount for audit services, which we're very excited about, especially proposing our 2021 budget next year. So next steps include, again, today, this was more informational. If there's no concerns or any questions, I would reach out to Haney and Company tomorrow to let them know of the award of the RFP. We would be working with them over the next couple of weeks on the details of the contract and bring the details back at the October 6th council meeting. And at that point, we would seek approval for our city manager to be able to execute that five-year contract with Haney and Company.
Great.
Any questions?
I don't know if there's questions. Jay, I don't know if you want to add it.
Yeah, I'll just kind of reiterate it. It was a very thorough and fair process, and I think it's really wise, as we all know, to shop around on a regular basis, and it was pretty significant, the, the price differential of what IBALE came back with versus what the rest of the pack was, was presenting. So that's why it just reiterates, it's, it's a good thing to do.
Stop wearing nice suits to those meetings, Jay.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, my hourly rate, a little different. And I just also want to acknowledge Peter Frenchman and his engagement in the process, too, so.
That's great, great. Okay, anybody else have questions? No? Well, Uli, again, great presentation. I think we feel very confident in the audit committees and the city staff's recommendation, so look forward to seeing that next meeting.
Thank you, thank you so much.
All right, now my favorite topic, public works. Okay, we're going to get an update on some Pipestorm pipelining with Simswa, and you think I'm kidding, Jacob, but I, I'm like, all right, what else you got for us? We saw the video last time, we loved it, so we're, we're still talking about it.
I don't have a video for you this time.
All right.
Well, yeah, thank you, mayor, council. This will be brief, but we did want to come back to you with a quick update on the project I presented to you earlier this year, which was a result of a pothole that opened up in County Line Road. So slide, please. What we're hoping to do is avoid this scenario from happening in other locations in County Line Road, and so as you can see, this is the location at the PF Chang's entrance to the mall, and then the square is kind of where that pesky pothole opened up, and that was a Centennial Simswa issue, but again, we're just on the south side and didn't want that to happen to us. So slide again. Okay, one more time, yeah, that was city's Centennial's responsibility there, and then the cost of that project, 88 lineal feet for Lone Tree, was $51,194. The contractor is ready to mobilize very soon now to do that work, and that's the reason I'm here speaking with you this evening. So why add, why add additional sites? Simswa did procure the, the contracting with In situ Form, which is the industry leader in doing the pipelining. And now that they have the pricing, they wanted to make sure that they could get this emergency project done, but now that they've drug the contractor out there, they do want to identify or get other critical areas taken care of, because they also have budget available, and they don't want to repair another big pothole on County Line Road. So they do have two other locations within the City of Lone Tree that were identified as critical. So again, the contractor's out there, so they, they made the ask to Lone Tree, would you be willing to partner on two additional sites with us? So the first site is County Line Road at Acres Green, and the Lone Tree portion of this site, when we split the soft costs or the mobilization and cleaning costs, and 23 feet of 15-inch pipelining, would be $12,882.50. And then the next location would be County Line at Willow Street, again, splitting the mobilization costs, and then 18 feet in the Lone Tree portion of 15-inch lining, which would come to $5,414.50. So those are the two locations that they've requested for the city's participation in furthering this project. These are locations that they were planning on coming to the city very soon and asking to partner on, because they were identified as critical during their inspection process. The, the issue that happened at PF Chang's interests, interests just kind of accelerated the conversation, essentially. Okay.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
So for the Acres Green portion, I know this is kind of before your time, even before Justin's, because there was a lot of work that was done just a couple of years ago, so this is.
A different pipe.
So a different pipe, okay, okay.
Yeah, and as we were looking through all the different infrastructure in County Line Road, there are even several more yet that are under the road that will need to be addressed in, at some point in the future. But we are hitting everything that is identified as critical with this exercise here. So now that, now we have time to plan for the rest of the corridor, essentially. So budget implications, when we first started talking with Simswa, they had an original ask of $41,118.50, but as we worked with them, we realized that did include one, a third site outside of Lone Tree. So as we finalized everything, we realized, well, the city's portion is actually 8,000, or 18,297, which is considerably lower. So that was a, that was a, a good, a good find. So with that additional cost that they've asked. So with that additional cost that they've asked us to participate in, we do believe that the operational savings in Public Works 2020 budget can account for that. So we just want to come back to council and apprise you of the additional ask from Lone Tree, or from Simswa, and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on this?
Just a question in terms of the process and evaluating piping. Is there something coming behind the critical piping that we'll see in the future?
Yes, that Simswa has inspected all the pipes under County Line Road, and they put them in different buckets, just like we do with our roadway network that you guys saw before, too. So this doesn't identify everything as critical. They do have other pipe runs that they've inspected that are going to need attention in the future. They made no bones about that, they're going to be coming and asking for more partnerships in the future. But this does address the immediate term need, just like you saw with the roadway network. We had the red and the pink areas that you really don't want to let them deteriorate any further, because the costs get a lot higher at that point. That's kind of where we're at with this ask.
But I think to follow up on Mike's question, and I had written down a similar question, and you're not going to, I think what we would like to understand during the budgeting process is how we're accounting for costs like these moving forward. So as you put the Public Works budget together, I've been sitting around at this table for a while, and we have not really added costs in for this type of thing. So I think as technology has gotten better, we've been able to scope these out, just like we've done with our paving. So we'd love to see that plan for what Simswa thinks is in our future, and then for some of the areas that are not part of Simswa that are in the city that we might need to be addressing. So I think that's really good catch there, and I think it's going to be a part of our process forward. But, but I don't think, anything on, anything else on this one?
No.
Great. No, I think it's good. I mean, we'll take advantage of the opportunity as it presents itself. I hope no more opportunities present themselves this year.
Yes.
All right.
What year is it?
I know, right? And the hits keep coming.
The year of 2020?
I'm not even saying it out loud anymore. Like a lightning bolt comes. All right, Jacob, thank you for that. And then moving on, but don't go too far, Jacob. So an update on the American Public Works Association awards. Now, I like, this is some good 2020 news, so we got to celebrate it.
That's right. Well, good evening, mayor, and members of city council. This is probably, this is definitely the most exciting presentation I've got to make, I believe, in my time here at the City of Lone Tree. And so I believe that we have a guest on the line, too, who's going to help me present this, and so we'll turn it over in just a second. But I want to start with really an update on the APWA awards. So the state, you know, APWA is a nationwide organization that really supports public works organizations at all levels. And it's, you know, what it's really good is every year, every chapter, so every state has its own chapter, and they go through an award process. And winning an award is a great thing, right? That's what we all are excited about, we get a reward that. But even bigger is, you'll see as you go through this, there's all kinds of great projects by cities and jurisdictions across the entire state of Colorado. And it's a great example to show the really exciting projects and the things making a difference in the community that Public Works has done, as well as a lot of the great individuals that are contributing to the Public Works organization. So I'm excited today to talk about what Lone Tree did, but I do want to highlight, you know, how exciting it is to be part of this sort of bigger public works world within Colorado. So next slide. So I believe, so we do have a guest speaker today, so I want to introduce, so Renee Railsback is the APWA Colorado Chapter Board President. She also serves as the Director of the Colorado LTAP program, and she has decided to join us tonight and get a chance to kind of introduce some of what APWA does, as well as help us announce these awards. So Renee, if you're online, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us, Renee.
Thank you for your time. It's a great honor to be here to help to participate in recognizing the great work that the City of Lone Tree Public Works Department is accomplishing. My name is Renee Railsback, and I am the current Colorado Chapter President of the American Public Works Association. This year marked the 35th anniversary of our annual Public Works Awards Program, and it strives to acknowledge the creativity, innovative techniques, and exceptional leadership of agencies throughout Colorado. It was an honor for me to be a part of the Award Selection Committee this year. Lone Tree's winners specifically were recognized for their collaborative area partnerships, their foresight in transportation management, and innovation implementation. I would highly encourage your agency to also submit your projects to the National APWA Awards Program next spring. We will be sending out some more information about that. I think you have some great projects and leaders there at the association, and I think it would be a valuable opportunity. So for myself and the Colorado Chapter Board of APWA, congratulations to all your staff for its recent successes. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. That's wonderful. We think they're awesome, and we like it when other people do.
They are being recognized.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you, Renee, and it's been a great pleasure to serve on the APWA Board as a Board of Directors position with Renee, and get to really work with some great directors of public works from all over the metro region. We have a lot of great conversations about, well, lately, how we're going to deal with all of the crises that are happening to keep our agencies going, but having that support structure for all of the agencies has been very effective, and appreciate Renee's leadership in that as well. So next slide. So specifically, you know, what are we here now to celebrate tonight? So these are the awards that are provided. And the only reason I want to show this is, again, Public Works does a whole lot of things, has a whole lot of hats. So you can see there's awards given to administration, operations, structures, parks and trails even, per project, sustainability, outreach. And we did submit several projects, and again, we've highlighted those, and the documents have went out to all the public works agencies around the state to look and review. And with that, our next slide. We were awarded an APWA award for environmental project for small communities, and this year we were awarded that for our Park Meadows Regional Detention Pond slash Pond H.
Hey, this is a big deal.
So we know that's been, and, you know, I have a few images up here of the project. This has been a long project that we briefed many, many times throughout councils, but it really was the example of amazing partnership between multiple agencies, multiple ideas, how do we get this thing in place and done, including multiple challenges to deliver this project. And all of that has happened, and why I believe it is an award-winning project, because it did really make something that is going to last for generations beyond this, to improve the community and work with partners.
And the environment.
What's that?
And the environment.
And the environment.
Yay.
Exactly. And you can see some of the different pictures in there, trying to get a picture of a regional pond, it's challenging, so we tried to get as far away as I could and get the whole picture. So that's what's, the finished product there is an image trying to show that, as well as the forbay under construction, and some of other work that happened out there. Next slide. I certainly wanted to highlight a few special thanks for this project. This was not a project that could have been done by any individual single-handedly. Certainly John Cotton, he was the project manager on this, and as we all know, worked many, many years to see this project come to fruition. Janet Krell has helped as our City of Lone Tree project manager since she's come on to really help this project finish and get to completion. I'm going to screw up Taylor's last name.
Gertz.
Taylor Gertz, from IMAG, who's our project engineer and designer, a longtime history, worked with the City of Lone Tree, and we're great to be able to award him and his team part of this project award because of the great work they did. And then also CEI, or Concrete Express Incorporated, who was the project team to deliver this on the development side. And certainly, we do not want to forget our partners that helped us through this process, CDOT and Flatiron Constructors as well. This was a partnership, again, we had our own project delivering parts of it, but the entire project was a very large coordinated process. And CDOT was very gracious to allow us to include a lot of this in their C470 work, to get this work together collaboratively. So again, I think an exciting moment, you know, a lot of small communities, and we're only in that because it's 20, technically 25,000 population or less is the category that it is in. But to see these type of projects happen anywhere in the metro region are exciting, and we're able to compete on these kind of really big public works infrastructure projects with some of the largest cities out there, and you can see that in the great work that the teams do. So any questions on our, sort of, I'm going to go to the individuals in just a second, but on our project or anything?
No, we just need to make sure we let John Cotton know, too, how important. He was the key collaborator, I think, in this one, getting the people and the, when we couldn't get bids on a project, he was, you know, cold calling, somebody come work with us. So we owe John a lot on this one.
Agreed. Next slide. So the other section, so those were the awards that are awarded, again, those are projects, programs that are awarded. The APWA also really wants to make sure that we are representing the amazing individuals that work in public works organizations. And I am biased in this, but I think that the City of Lone Tree has some of the finest public works employees in the entire region. And then again, by being an organization of this size, you have to wear multiple hats. You have to accomplish a lot of things and really work in multiple avenues to succeed. I think probably our biggest example of that is who was nominated for and was awarded the Outstanding Public Works Employee of the Year. That is awarded to, to the large community, City of Denver, but our small community, to the amazing Stephen Fletcher, who I believe, hopefully, has joined us on the phone or on the meeting.
Steve, are you there?
So Steve, are you there?
Because I'm not saying anything nice about him if he's not listening.
We'll try one more time. So Steve Fletcher. Steve, you there?
All right, we'll come back to him.
He may not have been on yet.
Skip him, go to the, go to the people that matter that are in the room.
So, you know, certainly, you know, Steve was nominated for really all, he is our project manager for our Adaptive Signal project this year, as you all know. That is learning a whole new technology, a whole new system, delivering a project, as well as coordinating all the different pieces that had to happen, as well as taking care of all the other day-to-day activities that Steve does. And certainly, as he has served as our operations manager, since we have kind of brought the public works in-house, he's done an amazing job of making sure our maintenance, operations. And in addition, many of you know how much work he does in the community to go out there and really talk to community members about anything from brick fences to snow plowing to anything else that may be a concern and working with them to resolve it. So I'm really glad that he was able to get this award. He also let me know that as soon as this went out, he's gotten emails from contractors, consultants, other cities all over congratulating him, and that's pretty exciting when you see how far of a breadth and the recognition he's getting in the industry, I think is really exciting.
I think we all have a special place in our heart for Steve. And I think since I've been mayor, you know, I get a lot of great emails about a lot of great work done by City of Lone Tree employees, but I would say I get more kudos regarding Steve Fletcher, just because he is so face-forward with our community, and he does such a great job with such a great attitude. So I couldn't agree more with everything that's been said, and I think council would agree. He is a gem, I just wish he was on the phone. But I actually, if he's with his children, I hope he's, and his wife, even better.
If you know Steve, his other passion is coaching soccer. So, you know, he's out there right now making sure that gets there. Okay, we'll move on. So we were actually blessed with the City of Lone Tree to have two of our employees receive APWA awards. And our second award that was awarded was for the Professional Manager of the Year for Drainage and Flood Control. So this employee has been with us for less than a year, although it already seems.
Good poach, good poach.
Much longer, and certainly Jacob has joined us and really just made an amazing difference in what we are able to accomplish, bringing all kinds of drainage experience and really taking us to the next level. We talked about becoming more of a big city, right, on some of these things, and really helping us to think of all the things he's already brought to council's attention and all the programs and processes that he's done to improve. In addition, he certainly serves outside of the city as well, and helps in other areas, right? He's, and I'm going to screw, the Cherry Creek flood.
Water quality. Good lord.
Thank you, councilman. He's serving as our technical advisory committee on that, and he's currently serving as the chairman of that and continues to help in a much region he's relied on to not only represent the City of Lone Tree, but the entire region on a lot of these major issues. And I believe that is why he was selected for this award. Now, Jacob is in attendance tonight, as he just presented to you, and so, Jacob, congratulations, and so glad that you've joined the team, and congratulations.
And Jacob, we have a little something for you, because in 2020, we need to celebrate some stuff. So on behalf of the city council and the city, here's a little something for you, Sierra, so you can go enjoy, and we are just so thrilled that you're part of the team. I want to say thank you so much for the great work you've already done, the great work you will continue to do, and you really well-deserved honor, so thank you. So let's give him a little. All right, and Sierra, one of our favorites. So that's wonderful. Thank you for giving us something to celebrate in 2020. See, there we go.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to celebrate it with you. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Justin. Nice job. Okay, so now the consent agenda, the only thing standing between you folks and dinner. So Resolution 20-23, and this is a long one, but hopefully everyone understands. The resolution approving an amended IGA between the City of Lone Tree and Douglas County regarding the Community Development Block Grant Program for federal fiscal years 2021 and 2023, administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And Kelly is here to quickly give us a little overview of what that is or answer questions. I mean, did everyone have a chance? It's really typos.
It was.
It was typos. So if there, it was in our packet, it was explained in our packet. I feel badly, Kelly, that you had to sit there, though. And I know Jennifer, EB, and Tina Dill are there as well, but I think it was a pretty self-explanatory story. So unless somebody has something, that's the consent agenda review. That we're going to review it, but, and then also on consent agenda, unless, yeah, we're good, we're good. Thank you, Kelly. Also included on our consent agenda, I have to find it, folks, apologize, is minutes from September 1st, claims for August 25th to September 8th, and our July 2020 Treasurers Report. Any questions on any of those consent items?
No.
No? Okay. All right. With that, our study session is concluded. Seth, do you have anything else for us?
All right.
Okay, all right, well, then we're at our dinner break, and we will reconvene. Oh, Steve Fletcher did communicate via text. So Steve, you're awesome, we miss you, but glad you're with your family. All right. And we have a little something for you, maybe you'll get it if you show up. All right, with that, we're finished, and dinner break, and we'll convene for our meeting at 7:00. Thanks.